Can you hear me? Good evening and welcome to the Budget Adoption Meeting of the Town Council for May 14th. If we could have the Deputy Mayor lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the Town Clerk please take attendance?
Counselor Breton.
Here.
Counselor Forrest.
Here.
Counselor Hurley.
Here.
Counselor Latina is not here yet. Counselor Lesser.
Here.
Counselor Rell.
Here.
Counselor Spinella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martino.
Here.
And Mayor Morin Bello.
Here. Thank you. So, we continue to ask government to do more with less as our expenses continue to rise. And we're also continuing to work on redevelopment in an effort to shift some of our tax burden from our residents to increase our commercial grant list. These are some of the struggles that we faced during this budget season. We have expenses that we have little control over. Our health insurance has gone up 10 percent. The MDC rate has gone up. Our trash collection rate has also gone up. I'd like to thank our town staff for the hours of work they have put into our budget in drafting it and supporting it and making the changes that we've asked for. Our Finance Department and our Town Manager's Office have worked countless hours, nights, and weekends helping us to get to this point. So, thank you to Mike, to Kathy, and Gary for all of their work along with their staff. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Town Manager, to make some remarks.
Sure. Just some quick remarks. And again, thank you, Mayor and Council. And good evening to Mayor, Council, and Council. I'd also like to just reiterate a strong thank you to Michael O'Neill, our Finance Director, and Kathy Bagley, who wears many hats, including at one point the interim Town Manager. Both were extremely instrumental in getting us to this point, as well as my team of Department Heads and their staff members for working diligently to spend some time with me after they've already gone through this process with both Kathy and Mike, to help really press those numbers as tight as we can. So, as you said, we've been working diligently with Department Head staff and members of the team, and of course, the Council, to review the original recommended budget, which brought us to today. Through a lengthy deliberation process, there's a number of changes that are submitted in front of you for an approval. And staff has worked to provide you the necessary motions to adopt the fiscal budget, fiscal year '20 budget, based on the adjustments and conversations that have been taking place daily and hourly and even in the last 20 minutes. So, just a quick rundown of these motions. They include adjustments to the manager's original budget for the town, adjustments to the Board of Education's requested budget, adjustments to the Library Board's requested budget, providing us an outcome of a mill rate of 40.74, which is a decrease of .04 from last year. Which, this does reflect a total spending increase of 3.5 percent, which is down from my original recommended 5.14 percent. The motion for these adjustments are various, and there were a number of scenarios that we went through that, again, adjust those original budgets. These were selected, again, working through Michael, Kathy, and the departments because we recognized that, as a town, we have to provide a certain level of services, and we didn't want to impact, we wanted to mitigate the level of impact that we had to the residents to ensure that we could continue to provide as many services as possible. So, with that, I don't know if Mr. O'Neill wants to add anything or review anything.
Good evening. Mike O'Neill, Director of Finance. I suppose, if you'd like, at this point, I can take you through the package that has the motions, unless you, as you wish.
I think we are prepared to make the motions unless anybody has a comment or question before we begin.
No, we did it last night, so.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Forrest.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, under this proposed budget, we just received the numbers back from you, is the proposed percentage increase for the median taxpayer .1 percent? Is that an accurate number?
That's the percentage increase of the tax bill for the median value taxpayer, median value house, and two median value cars.
.1 percent?
Yes.
Thanks. Just confirming.
Okay. You'd like to begin, Deputy Mayor?
Motion that the budget as submitted by the Town Manager on March 28, 2019, being hereafter, is amended as follows. Decrease $218 from Account 110, Town Council. Decrease $270, Account 140, Information Technology Services. Decrease $6,947 from Account 150, Town Clerk. Decrease $10,271 from Account 220, Finance. Decrease $134, Account 230, Tax Assessor. Increase $176, Account 240, Tax Collector. Increase $43, Account 300, Planning and Development. Decrease $135, Account 410, Building Inspections. Decrease $27,394, Account 420, Police. Decrease $2,913, Account 430, Townwide Radio. Increase $17, Account 440, Fire Commercial. Decrease $15,473, Account 450, Fire Suppression. Decrease $184, Account 510, Engineering. Increase $5,723, Account 520, Physical Services. Decrease $312, Account 620, Social and Youth Services. Decrease $25,615 from Account 700, Public Library. Decrease $52,583, Count 800, Park and Recreation. Decrease $185,000, Account 920, Debt Services. Decrease $49,000, Transfers CIP/CNEF. Decrease $30,000, Account 960, Reserve for Retirees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And just before we vote, if we add these numbers up, they come up to $400,000? Is that accurate? I did not add them up?
It's a decrease of $400,490. There's two small adjustments to true-up pension and medical. That's where the $490 deduct is, but otherwise, it's your correct.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a question.
Yes. Sorry.
I'm sorry. You guys are moving so fast.
I know. I'm sorry. I should have asked for questions before I took the vote.
This is not one of the scenarios we talked about? This is a combination of several scenarios? Am I understanding that correct?
I believe this is the $375,000 scenario that we received in the spreadsheet with the addition of $25,000 from the library.
So, not one through eight? This is a different one altogether?
This is on the spreadsheet, yeah. Would you pass that down? This is the spreadsheet that we received via email. And it's the third. It's the third column. Oh, I see.
Just last night.
Okay.
So, it's not one of the ones that was discussed last night?
The full cut is 1.8, which would be Scenario 5?
You're increasing the collection rate, too?
Yes.
So, I guess I'm confused because Scenario 5 had the town with $300 million reduction, and the Board of Ed 1.5.
Right. And then when we received.
$1,000, sorry.
Right. So, it is different than line five, but the full amount is the 1.8. Is that right? Yes. I need to find that sheet. It's a modified.
Yeah, it's the same amount.
It's a modified Scenario 5.
Total decrease of 1.8 million.
Yes.
So, the Board of Ed goes down $100,000, the town goes up $100,000?
Because the custodial benefits that we initially thought were much higher are not, in essence, at that level.
They're at $400,000, though.
Right. Are there other questions?
No. Thank you for the clarification.
Anybody else? Okay. I'll take the motion, the vote again. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Second motion?
Before I make the motion on this for the Board of Ed, just one council comment. Prior to making the adjustment to proposed Board of Ed budget, I'd like to make one council comment. For the last couple of years, Counselor Hurley and I have both asked the Board of Education at their budget workshops to expand their detailed new-year budget. Besides the new budget details, we requested they include at least the current-year details as well, including prior-year actuals as well would be great. Our requests have not been requested in the past. By providing this information would help us, as well as the BOE elected officials, to see what is increasing, being added, or deleted in their budget. Since the budget workshops are not recording, and this meeting is, I'm making a formal request that this happen in the future. And ask that the Town Clerk forward a copy of these comments to the BOE management so they can work on any programming change that are required to make this available for future budget years. Now, onto the motion. The motion is that the Board, the budget as submitted by the Town Manager, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
By the Town Manager on March 28, 2019, being hereafter amended as follows, to decrease the total appropriations for the school purposes by $1,400,000.
And do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on this motion? Any comments or questions on this motion?
I have no comments. I think it doesn't take out enough, but, so.
Counselor Rell?
There was concern last night, and, you know, unfortunately, I'm just looking at this stuff right now. The net adjustment to the Board of Ed budget was a decrease of $368,212, and that is from Sheet 1 of this budget reconciliation. Is that included in the 1.4 million decrease?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, just looking at it.
You're referring to the custodial benefits?
Right. Yep.
Yes.
In the original Board of Ed budget that was presented to us, there was a, was there an increase or a decrease of approximately $900,000 that was originally proposed?
So, our number, our calculated number when it came over was, was it 981? Mike, if you recall, I don't have the sheet in front of me, which we were anticipating, which would include increases for any adjustments for this year. I don't believe the original budget had that reflected.
Could you just repeat the question for me?
The original proposed budget presented to us from the Board of Ed, there was a discrepancy of $900,000 for custodial. What was the final reconciled number for the town?
So, the sheet you have that you're referring to, there was an issue with the shift of costs from the Board to the town for custodial and maintenance services. The Board had taken out $4.3 million, and we were adding 5.1. And so, there was a reconciliation. We got down to the, the issue was in determining benefits, because of the way the Board budgets benefits, they don't break it out by department. This sheet resolves that difference. So, we've worked with the business office, with the business manager, and finalized that today, but the total difference was $693,000, and that's just reduced by some changes that were not taken into account when the Board prepared its proposed budget.
Okay.
So, the real difference was $693,000, not the 900 that we had been discussing.
Okay.
And if you think about it, we also had a difference between 4.3 million, which the Board showed in all their presentations that had been taken out. And prior to benefits, my reconciliation showed 4.1 million, so there's a $200,000 difference there. So, the Board had picked up part of the benefits. Call it 200,000, so you, 200-plus. So, it gets us down to the 693, call it 700,000. And then after that, there's adjustments for, again, just better information since the Board had prepared its budget. They assumed 9 percent increase in medical. Our consultant is telling us 11 percent, so there's adjustment for that. And then the pension, the number for millment came in after the Board had prepared its proposed budget.
Okay.
So, those are those three offsets you see below. It takes the 693 down to 368.
This, for those in the audience and listening, this is reflective of our shared services with the Board of Ed for the custodial, correct?
And? Yes.
And so, for the net, does that shared services, or, you know, what we and the Board agreed to last year or the year before, is there savings by having the custodial moved over from the Board of Ed to the town side, looking at the numbers that we are faced with today?
Are there savings? In terms of personnel costs, the staffing is the same. There's contractual increases. The benefits those employees are entitled to went up by the same amount that they did for all other employees, so no savings there. What was done was all of the, also utilities and the maintenance, budgeted maintenance funds also came over to the town. Utilities went up based on the analysis that was done at the Business Office and in my office. The maintenance piece, and I'll just, I'd like to get that amount. Bear with me. It's page 37 of your workbook, if you care to. Total maintenance was roughly $780,000. That amount, because of physical services, Sally Katz said, you know, let's just take that amount without any increase and see how it serves us. So, there was no increase there. But to answer your question, I mean, no savings, but a flat, 0 percent was taken on that piece of it, just to, again, you know, with new management, if you will, we're going to see what we think that number is. But we had no basis for increasing it.
Okay. So, really, no realized savings with the combination? I mean, factor in increase in utility costs, increase in contractual pay, and then medical going up. I mean.
No, there's more budgeted this year than last year for that group.
Okay.
Yeah, and those were costs that they would have had to absorb regardless.
No matter what.
Right. The hope is a long-term impact and ability to adjust things as we go, as opportunities, attrition, growth opportunities, right? Better knowledge and understanding of the maintenance barriers that might be coming forward, and how we work it into our budget going forward. So, there's a long-term plan.
Hope that we would realize some savings.
Yep.
Okay. I would like to have seen the 1.4 increased. I'll save my comments for the end, but, you know, I think there could be additional savings on that. I know the Board probably rolls their eyes every time we say that every year, but I think we've got to do a little bit deeper of a dig, you know, maybe more with a scalpel, and look at some of the numbers a little bit further. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Deputy Mayor?
Mike, just for savings on the shared services part, the salary grade of the person hired was lower than the facility manager, so there was some savings there. The secretary that came over left and was replaced with somebody of a lower salary grade. So, you know, from those two things alone, there was some savings from that aspect alone. It's miniscule, but it's still a savings. I think through coordinations and efficiencies, we'll see more savings in the future.
Let's hope. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Dolores, did you get the, did you get the count? Who voted no? Okay, Jody, you're, I'm a yes. Okay. Thank you. The next motion?
That the, motion that the total appropriations for the school purposes be set at $55,759,339 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions on this motion, comments? Okay. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Number four?
Motion that the Town Council adopt the town budget as submitted by the Town Manager on March 28, 2019, and as amended by the Town Council in a sum of $50,299,206 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019.
Okay. Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Number five?
Motion that the total appropriations for the Capital and Non-Recurring Road Fund be set at $1,800,000 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this motion? Counselor Rell?
I just had a question about last year's road fund. If I remember correctly, we were at 1.5, but we increased it by $300,000?
Yes.
To 1.8. So, we're not increasing this further with the needs that are out there?
The town has been fortunate to receive some funds coming in as well, so our engineering department will be busy for the year on road projects.
So, are we, are you saying there may be additional funds coming in?
Well, we received state funding for two areas of town, so that, rather than increasing the 1.8, we're using those state funds to address Woke Hill to Jordan, or Jordan to Victoria.
Is that Town Aid Road funds, or?
Was that qualified, that was separately, that was a separate grant, correct? That picked up?
Those were separate, lots of grants.
Right.
Separate grant through Prague.
Okay. And do we know how much those were for? This was the projects that we voted on?
Woke Hill.
Yep.
And Highland.
Highland, Thornbush.
Yep, to Thornbush. Yep, Thornbush, down.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And Mike, plus those two projects, we finally received this year the drainage money to fix Bell Pond Dam.
Yep.
So, because of all that additional work, our town engineering staff is going to be very busy trying to get all that stuff done, so to increase, you know, the actual road thing, you know, I don't know if they could get to it with everything else on their plate.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion that the appropriations for the library purposes be set at $2,023,934 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this motion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Number seven?
Motion that the total amount to be raised by taxes for the town library, school, and capital and non-recurring road funds purposes combined be set at $92,193,981 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019.
Okay. Do we, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Is that Counselor Spinella?
Yep.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this? Okay. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Motion that the general fund tax rate on all taxable properties be set at 40.21 mils for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this motion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. And number nine?
Motion that the Capital and Non-Recurring Roads Fund tax rate on all taxable properties be set at .53 mils for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this motion? Counselor Rell?
Just a question on the combined mill rate. So, if we combine 40.21 for general fund tax rate and the road tax, or mill rate, we're at 40.74. Is that the combined mill rate?
Yes.
What was last year's combined mill rate?
40.78.
40.78?
Yes.
And then, would the 40.74 take into consideration revow?
Yes.
So, despite a revow, we are only seeing a decrease of .04 in our mill rate?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Forrest?
Related to that question, it appears that if we take revow in, that the tax increase is .10 percent, according to the math, which is pretty low.
Still an increase, though.
.10, not even 1, .1.
No, but people's taxes are going up.
$7 on average, yes. $7.
It's a Happy Meal.
$7.
Gosh. Anything else?
I don't agree with that, but.
Do you want to make an additional comment?
No, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Is that aye?
I know. I didn't hear. I wasn't sure. Okay. That concludes all of our motions. Do Council members have comments before we adjourn the meeting this evening? Counselor Spinella?
The, since I've been on the Town Council, I think everybody's pretty much of the opinion that this is not a sustainable form of government, that we have raising taxes every year and not consolidating enough services. I think we need, at some point... I think we need, at some point in the immediate future, need to look at really consolidating a lot of the, you know, duplication we have between the Board of Ed and the Town Council. We cannot continue to just raise people's property taxes to support this government because it's just, it's not going to work. And I've asked, I won't ask this Town Manager because he's new, but I've asked every budget we passed, I asked the Town Manager, is this sustainable? And every time, I was told no. So I think at some point, we need to take a real hard look at, you know, really consolidating some things and changing the way we give services to the people of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Counselor Rell?
I have to concur with Counselor Spinella. You know, it's every budget that I'm looking at, and, you know, we all read the paper, we see the news. If the tolls pass, if the, pass down to the towns for teachers' retirement, increases in business taxes, paid family medical leave, minimum wage, you name it, everything that is affecting our economy affects our pocketbooks. And if it's $7, as Counselor Forrest says, or 100 and some that we kind of figured out, it's just nickel and diming the residents of not only Weathersfield, but the state of Connecticut, and I agree, it's unsustainable. Hopefully, we can maybe put together a working group over the next couple of months and maybe look at some of the consolidation a little bit further and a little bit deeper, like I had said about the Board of Ed budget, maybe have both of us at the table to really look at the budget and see how we can begin the process of either stabilizing or, heaven forbid, decreasing the spending that goes on. So I appreciate the time to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Lesser, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Bye.